It's now August the 6th, 2019, 6:00 PM here at City Hall, Wednesday, 16th, West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. The Granbury City Council Regular Meeting is now called to order. I might note that Councilperson Trish Reiner will not be with us tonight. I'd like to call upon my good friend, Father Stewart, to lead us in our invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of the Texas flag, our allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. At this time, we have a very special presentation for the citizens on the committee for the Memorial and Veterans Day to present plaques to the pecan plantation formation team for their dedication and service in doing the missing man formation fly over the Memorial Day ceremonies and the field of flags. And I'll call upon Ms. Julia Pennell with this presentation.
Well, I don't look like Max Ogle, and I'm not as tall as he is. It was very important to Max that we remember this team because how wonderful it is when someone says, "Look to the sky," and we have that wonderful missing man formation. Everybody goes, "Oh, my gosh, how wonderful." And we get to recognize the people that do that because they love doing it. They do that most times out of their own pocket, paying for their own gas. And so it was important to Max. What he didn't tell me, and Mary, is that when we changed the date until just a day or two ago, that he wasn't going to be here. But it's with a lot of honor that we do this. And each of you on the dice has a picture because we wanted you to see the beautiful plaques that they'll be receiving. They have not received them yet. Max is what you call the ground man, so he helps them. Because we may not think it's dangerous, but I have been told that it could be very dangerous at different times. And what we're asking today, I hope you get a chance to look at them. Mary did her magic again, as she does, with the plaques. And I think we started something with friends in Memorial Lane because now everybody loves them. So I'm going to call them forward. And we have asked their wives to come with them because I learned tonight, all the wives are pilots. And you cannot do, when you're a partner, things like this without your partner's support. So as I call your name, Mary, you want to step over there, and we'll present them with the plaques. And Fay, would you take a group shot for us, please? I'm going to call you up. Lead plane, Dick Kite. Isn't that beautiful? And if you'll just stay up in front, please. Ray Lewis. Joe Sasser. And I hope you all get to see these. They're just beautiful. Mary did an outstanding job. It's called a missing man. It has the airplanes with the airplane appearing, their names on it. And Bob Butt, who's the fourth member of the team, he is truly our missing man tonight. So we have his for them. So on behalf of the citizens of Granbury and Hood County, we thank you for dedication, for that beautiful sight that we get to see at Memorial Day and Veterans Day and on the parade day. And we appreciate your dedication to what you do. So if you'll stand there a moment, we'll take a picture.
Thank you, Julia Pennell. And thank you, guys, for what you do. This is very important to the community. I know lots of people look forward to that missing plane formation. And you guys are real polished when you do it. It works out great. I've seen it just hit right at the few seconds that it's supposed to be at that place. And that's some good coordination right there, getting that to happen like this. So thank you very much for what you do for the community. At this time, we're going to our citizens' participation. The City Council provides an opportunity for citizens to present concerns or address issues that are not matters of consideration listed on the posted meeting agenda during the citizens' participation period at one City Council meeting per month. Subject to these following rules, a person wishing to address the City Council must first register with the City Secretary and provide the following information: their name, resident address, daytime telephone number, and the subject matter to be presented. Only one person may approach the microphone at one time. Speakers must address their comments to the presiding officer. And the speakers may file copies of their remarks or supporting information with the City Secretary, who will make the information available to the City Council or the City Manager if requested. The City Council will be allowed to receive input or information for a future agenda item, but will not be allowed to enter into any discussion. The Council shall allot a maximum of 30 minutes for citizens' participation during the designated Council meeting. All items on the consent agenda are without the consent agenda. So at this time, we have J.C. Campbell, who is new to this. J.C. Campbell.
Mr. Mayor, City Manager, Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm just kind of echoing what I said already. As most of you know, we have the Veterans Day program and the Memorial Day program. And I told Dick a while ago, I said, "You know, having you guys..." There's two teams, by the way. Last week, Memorial Day, we had two teams. We had one to fly over the field of flags, and we had one to fly over us. So it's great to see that. But I told Dick a while ago, I said, "It's like having a cream on top of a cookie." You know, this makes it better. And that's what Mr. Mayor said here a while back, was every year, we're going to make it better. But I'd just like to personally take this opportunity to thank the guys that do the hard work. They enjoy doing it. I know that. But it really makes our Veterans Day and Memorial Day programs a whole lot better. But it's something that can go unsaid, but not with me around here because I really appreciate it. And I think with Julia and the rest of the teams there, we appreciate it very much. So thank you very much for participating in this.
Thank you, J.C. Our next speaker is Dan Golden. Is it Golden?
Thank you. I'm very unfamiliar with speaking to city government. In fact, this is the first time I've ever spoken any form of government in my life. And as I read the instructions, I am addressing my comments to the presiding person, who I am not sure who that is. Mr. Mayor, my question, and what brings me here very simply, is that I'm trying to get an answer from Chris Kaufman in that we have spoken previously about the city's lack of policy regarding solar energy. And as such, it's been going on for the better part of, oh, I'm going to say approximately three and a half, four months, that in particular, my residence has a solar array that not only do we produce solar power enough to power our house, but we also have enough solar power that during the given day, anywhere from 7:30 when the array comes online to approximately 3:30 in the afternoon, the house is self-powered by our solar panels in addition to providing, or in addition to putting polar power back on to the power grid. As such, the city does not have the ability to read that power that I'm putting back on to the grid. And the reason for my question, very simply, is in my appearance here before the City Council, is that I am not sure if Mr. Kaufman can answer my question, is that I've left three messages for him. And with the Secretary Sarah Osborne, starting on 7/10, 7/19, and 7/18. And the last time he previously spoke to me, he said that he was going to meet a civil engineering consultant and address the issue of the city's inability to find out or to recognize solar power being put on the city's energy grid. So that is the reason for my appearance here today. So I don't know if Chris can answer and tell me what the resolution, or I know there's not a resolution, but in turn, what was discussed, and if he has any information that can share with me, as I've left three messages for him through his office, to address what was discussed with the civil engineer regarding solar energy for the town of Granbury. That's it.
Thank you. We'll note it and get it to the City Secretary. Thank you. Okay. So that concludes our citizens' participation. We will now move into our consent agenda. Those items being, number one, to consider approving City Council meeting minutes of July 16, 2019, joint workshop and regular meeting. The second one being consider award Public Management Corporation Administration and Planning Service Contract for the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department Recreational Trails Funds. And as you know, Council, that's the item here with the Act in Middle School, to do the walking trails, and it's somewhat right, a grant of about $2,500. So, Council, you've had an opportunity to look at these consent agenda at this time. Is there any items you wish to discuss or change or to pull off at the consent agenda at this time? Here and none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said consent agenda. I have a motion by Councilman Corrigan.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Wadley. Council, any more discussion on the consent agenda? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Consent agenda is approved. Next, we'll move into our deliberation agenda. That first item being a public hearing and consider adopting ordinance number 1949, approving request of Roy Weston for a Pacific use permit. I'm going to call upon Scott Stopcheck to give a staff report on that. Scott?
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Mr. Manager. What we have is a piece of property addresses 1459 North Plaza, Plaza Drive. This is the Pac Rat retail store. There are other retail suites located in the building as well. It's located around approximately one acre, currently zoned heavy commercial. There's been prior SUPs issued on this property previously for a landscaping contractor. What the applicant is proposing to do is, in addition to the retail service that's being offered on site, park a couple of used cars and boats on the site and have that as kind of a sideline business. Our zoning ordinance requires that an SUP be issued for the property for used automobile and boat sales as part of our land use matrix. Referring back to the land use matrix, you can see highlighted in red, it falls under heavy commercial with an SUP, there's supplemental standards, site plans required, shall not be used for the storage of wrecked vehicles or the parting out of vehicles. All vehicles shall be stored, or repairs shall be screened from the public right-of-way, and all equipment shall be stored and displayed on approved hard surface. So in looking at the available parking that the applicant has for, to support the retail for the brick-and-mortar type uses there currently, initially, before going to P&amp;Z, we calculated that at 24. That has since been altered somewhat post-P&amp;Z deliberations. I'll get to that in a minute. But what P&amp;Z deliberated on was regulating the three available spaces because the retail needs 21 currently. So he had three in excess, those three being highlighted in the area toward the back denoted in a block in red. The applicant came forward to P&amp;Z and stated that he preferred not to have them on the side of the building, that he would prefer to have them in the front. Nonetheless, there's still that overage of three that needs to be delineated where those three will be located. One of the other issues that came up at P&amp;Z was, prior to P&amp;Z and during, and a few days after P&amp;Z, one of the boats that he had offered for sale on site was at the intersection of two public dedicated streets. And we have by our zoning ordinance, a 25 by 25 visibility and maintenance triangle that's measured off the property line, not the curb line, further inset beyond the back of the curb into the property line for safety reasons, visibility, and site distance clearance. And that's typical of all intersecting public streets. And this was brought to light during the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting by one of the commission members that you had a boat parked in the visibility triangle. He went out to look at the site, and he couldn't see when he was queued up at the stop sign on coming traffic. Nonetheless, the Planning and Zoning Commission wanted to work with him. They highlighted this safety concern to the applicant about visibility and maintenance triangle being infringed upon. And then circle back around and then said, "Well, if we give you three cars, then we don't know where those cars are going to be in the regular parking spaces. It'll be like nailing down a drop of water in essence. So we're going to regulate them toward the back of the building or the side of the building," which is what Shad had presented, devised a box on the side of the building, kind of out of the site distance triangle. After the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the applicant came forward and met with one of my planners and said, "Well, one of those spaces in the box is located in front of a dumpster, it's not usable." A very reasonable, practical statement. So what that did was deduct one of those three available spaces off of the books, still keeping in mind we needed 21. So going from 21, we're now to 23. Two spaces are now available. And those two spaces are marked just to the north of the box, north of the X. So, long story short, is your Planning and Zoning Commission is recommending earmarking the spaces in that red box, the two now available that aren't infringing on the waste collection system's ability to get to the dumpster, those two spaces in the picture to the right, on the right-hand side of the picture. The applicant did go out there and paint the spaces in order to receive those cars. City staff mailed out 11 public notices to adjoining property owners. We posted in the Hood County News as required by state statute. As of tonight, no letters in support or opposition were received by city staff. Your Planning and Zoning Commission recommended by a vote of five a's and zero nays to approve the request. As with the conditions as stipulated in your agenda packet, and they're itemized as well on your screen, parking shall be limited to no more than three is what they voted on. But with the deduction of that one space in front of the dumpster, it's been reduced to two. And this shall be cumulative of both boats and autos. Parking of the boats and autos will be designated, the spaces located on the southeast side of the building is delineated in the red box. Supplemental standards will apply, and the specificities permit will expire after one year and be reevaluated based on performance. That's my report. Mr. Mayor, I know the applicant, Mr. Weston, is here in the audience.
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing, so at this time, I will open it up to the public. Does anybody in the public have, wish to speak on this item? Like Scott said, the applicant is in the audience, and so be there for some questions. Roy. Here and none, I'll... Oh, that's the applicant. That's the applicant. Do you want to speak, Roy? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Mayor. And we had this conversation at the last meeting.
Go ahead and tell us your name and address.
Roy Weston, 1459 North Plaza, Pac Rat owner, building owner. My issue is, how do you sell a vehicle on the side of the building? You can't. So the reason I kept coming back to P&amp;Z is because they need to be in the front of the building. The idea of it all is to attract attention to the store and to help out some people that I know, personal help, you know?
Okay. I'll ask you a question, Roy. So you were okay with the P&amp;Z's recommendations?
No.
Pardon?
No, I was not.
You was not? Council, do you have any...
I've got one, Mayor.
Questions or concerns for the applicant? Go ahead, Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. What do you, how many do you want?
Two, three. All I'm really trying to do is attract attention to the store. I mean, I'm not really, I don't want a car lot. I've told, I had this conversation before. I'm not buying old Kia's. I'm buying hot rods and toys for men. And the store I have is a man cave kind of store. And like I said, if you come in the store, you'll see what I got. It's not a junk store, retail store. It's a man cave kind of thing. And therefore, because of the street that I'm on, which is Manland Alley, tire store, parts house, Kawasaki dealership, all I'm trying to do is draw them in.
So if you think you had three up front, you'd be okay?
And I can put them right in front of my store because I use those cars as a buffer because if somebody pulls up there in their vehicle, right straight up to the curb, you couldn't get a piece of furniture out of that store if you wanted to. I can, at that point, move one of my vehicles, load whatever into their vehicle, or into their car, or whatever, and it gives me a buffer.
Well, you do, you all do sharing with H.H. Printing, don't you, on parking?
Yeah. Well, she actually is the owner of the building. So we own the whole thing.
But I've been in there before, and I said, "I'm in the wrong place." And she said, "Don't make no difference."
Right, don't make any difference. Come to the building, we'll help you out.
Yeah.
I think the City Manager's got a question for you, Roy.
Absolutely.
Roy, how many parking spots are required for the retail space that you have?
Well, 21 for the building total.
Okay. And how many do you have?
Well, there again, it depends on how you look at it. I got 24 technically.
Do you own the whole building?
Correct, and the lot behind it.
Okay. Just trying to lay out some facts for them.
Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Wadley.
And I guess, Scott, this is more for you. Why did they just want to have spaces on the side? If you can have two designated or three designated spaces, let's just say the two, why can't there be any two that he designates for that purpose?
So typically, we get a site plan from the applicant showing where those two spaces are proposed to be. And so at P&amp;Z, it was, again, it was very fluid. We didn't get a site plan, and Shad came up with this box on the side. So that was, I will admit, that was initiated, I believe, by staff. But it was also based on keeping parking and equipment out of the van along the front of the intersecting street.
But if we, Mr. Mayor...
Go ahead, Councilman Wadley.
So if we moved this box to the front two spaces, two spaces in front of his door, there's no ordinance that would prevent that, is there?
No, you can move, Council's discretion, so you can move this red box to any two spaces that are delineated on approved hard surface.
So at P&amp;Z, and I'm sorry, I missed that meeting, but so what was the pushback to, or was that even brought up? Hey, how will we move these from the back to the front? Because to me, that makes sense, too. If nobody sees your cars, nobody's going to know they're for sale, and therefore, a year later, they're still your car.
Yeah, P&amp;Z, it wasn't expanded on as much. There was some dialogue and focus on, well, the equipment's being parked out front in an area that's compromising safety. So it kind of pushed the parking spaces to the back.
I think, seeing the picture of the boat on the corner there, I mean, clearly, that's an issue. If we can address this and make the applicant happy, and we don't park boats on the corner, I think everybody goes away feeling like they've won something here.
Sure. So we can delineate two spaces there. But the key is, for code enforcement purposes, is to actually have as a part of the adoption ordinance where those two spaces are, so a city staff member can go by there and say that those two spaces are the free spaces that are above and beyond required for the retail space where the cars for sale are located.
Does that sound like a decent compromise?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
I mean, those two spaces could even be striped or something for that.
So he's got, yeah, he's got existing striped spaces on the front. If you look at your aerial image, he could actually take those two blackish, grayish cars that are parked north of the red car that are along the street front.
Yes.
And delineate a box around those two and say, "That's it."
Yeah, I like it.
So, Lee. That truck, is it parked in the visual triangle there, right there where it says site plan?
Yeah, I don't know if the, that's why I was focusing on the two black cars, because the white truck may be parked on a right-of-way, it looks like.
Yeah. Doesn't look like that's a legitimate parking spot.
That's your truck, Chris.
Yeah.
So we're okay with that if we just move them there. Now, I think the challenge is, it's code enforcement, and if you're using four spaces, and somebody comes up and says, "Hey," I mean, you'd be putting us in a bad spot, right?
Well, I got that.
And said, "Hey, I can park wherever I want, whatever I want, because it's my parking lot." So we understand the restrictions here because, you know, and I'm going to address something later with, when there's spaces delineated for certain purposes, to take away from parking area, and folks see and say, "We'll do this, we'll stay inside this box." And then you drive by there, and they got stuff all over the parking lot. To me, that's a violation of the agreement, and sometimes we get sensitive to those things. So that would be the only drawback, is understand that it's two spaces you pick, and it's two. And so if you're okay with, I would rather, again, and I always hate to vote down something or modify something that P&amp;Z approved, but if this may not have come up, then I can't see how they could have considered it an option if it wasn't even brought up.
And that very well could have been included in what they had requested, another site plan, you might say, or whatever. I mean, you could have included that in there, I guess, Roy.
They actually motioned to delineate the parking and relegate it to that area in the red box on the side.
They did.
But at that point, it was three spots.
Yes.
And then when we found the dumpster was there, we had to keep it clear, so we're reducing, so he really wants three spots, that's it.
Well, he only, yeah, so he wants three, but if we were counting that area as a spot when looking at aerial overheads, so again, he had 24 by the aerials, but we counted the one in front of the dumpster. To duck that one out, he's only got two. So he's got two free spots.
So, but the compromise is, we'll move it to the front, we leave it with two.
Correct.
But we're okay with that.
I'm good with that.
So it was just from our vantage point, if Council can delineate generally where that is in this aerial, we'll update the site plan map, get him to review it, and then before the mayor signs it. And then we can either delineate those two gray ones just above the red one, or shift it over to the west a little bit, the one with a white top and the gray one next to it, just north of the, get it closer to the...
Right in front of his door.
I'll show you, it'd be in front of my door. It's easier.
I can see, let him pick.
Okay.
Is there a hard rule against having a parking space in front of a dumpster?
Yes.
Pretty hard to dump and empty it with the...
No.
That truck, is it parked in the visual triangle there, right there where it says "Site Plan"?
Yeah, I don't know if the... That's why I was focusing on the two black cars, because the white truck may be parked on a right-of-way, it looks like.
Yeah. Doesn't look like that's a legitimate parking spot.
That's your truck, Chris.
Yeah.
So, we're okay with that, if we move them there? Now, I think the challenge is, it's code enforcement, and if you're using four spaces, and somebody comes up and says, "Hey," I mean, that's... You'd be putting us in a bad spot, right?
Well, I got that.
And said, "Hey, I can park wherever I want, whatever I want, because it's my parking lot." So, we understand the restrictions here, because, you know, and I'm going to address something later with... When there's spaces delineated for certain purposes, the takeaway from parking area, and folks see and say, "We'll do this, we'll stay inside this box," and then you drive by there, and they got stuff all over the parking lot. That... To me, that's a violation of the agreement, and sometimes we get sensitive to those things. So, that would be the only drawback, is understand that it's two spaces you pick, and it's two. And so, if you're okay with it, I would rather, again, and I always hate to vote down something or modify something that P&amp;Z approved, but if this may not have come up, then I can't see how they could have considered it an option if it wasn't even brought up, so...
And that very well could have been included in what they had requested, another applicant... Another site plan, you might say, or whatever. I mean, you could have included that in there, I guess, Roy.
They actually motioned to delineate the parking and relegate it to that area in the red box on the side.
They did, yes.
But at that point, it was three spots.
Yes.
And then, when we found the dumpster was there, we had to keep it clear. So, we're reducing... So, he really wants three spots, that's...
Well, he only... Yeah, so he wants three, but if we were counting that area as a spot when looking at aerial overheads... So, again, he had 24 by the aerials, but we counted the one in front of the dumpster. To duck that one out, he's only got two. So, he's got two free spots.
So, but the compromise is, we move it to the front, we leave it with two.
Correct.
But we're okay with that.
I'm good with that.
So, it was just from our vantage point, if counsel can delineate generally where that is in this aerial, we'll update the site plan map, get him to review it, and then before the mayor signs it. And then, we can either delineate those two gray ones just above the red one, or shift it over to the west a little bit, the one with the white top and the gray one next to it, just north of the... Get it closer to the...
Right in front of his door.
I'll show you. It'd be in front of my door.
Right.
It's easier.
I can see, let him pick.
Okay. So...
Is there a hard rule against having a parking space in front of a dumpster?
Yes.
Okay.
Fine.
Pretty hard to dump and empty it with the...
No. If you knew on trash day, I'm not going to park there, but the other days, I could. That was my question.
Yeah, and...
If there's a rule, I'm not trying to break a rule here. I'm trying to buy a third spot.
Yeah, Mr. Weston really helped things out by going out recently and Chevroning that parking space off as a no parking zone for the solid ways people to get to.
Right.
What about that boat at the back there? Is that approved, or is that going to have to move?
He doesn't have an S.U.P. right now, so...
Okay. So, is there a problem with that? Should we include an area back there for a vehicle? I mean, we're just shooting from the hip here tonight, so...
Right, so he's got, again, focusing on the two available parking spaces that are delineated. I would say, let's give them the two that are not snuck up against the building, that aren't delineated, that we haven't researched, and a year from now, we'll revisit it.
Mayor, I have a question.
Councilman Allen.
If you own that property behind there, the dirt park, can we designate parking for his employees back there and give him more parking up front or not?
The parking all the way around the building, the 21, is all included in here? Is all inclusive?
So, you couldn't count the parking lot back behind there?
Everything...
The dirt park's counted, too?
No.
No.
Oh, you can't use the dirt parking lot?
Yeah, but why couldn't you count the dirt?
It has to be on a proved hard surface, which is concrete or hot mix.
If you're going and put them on the surface and then go back to the city and get it.
Yeah.
Every time you stripe it, the lines move.
All right. I just know the business opened up there on the road, and I went by the day, and they had two parking places. Rest of them had tires all over the place. So...
That was asphalt, though, wasn't it?
It is, uh-huh. But still, it was all tires, and they had two parking places, so I'm glad they're doing good, looks like it, but...
Depending on their showroom size, how many parking spaces they need.
Yeah.
Like Councilman Mobley said, you know, normally, this boat's going to take up two parking pla... I mean, it's going to take up two of those. It's, what, 20 feet?
That particular boat was a particular circumstance for a gentleman, that his wife has cancer, and so I got rid of it for him.
Okay, Mr. Weston. And counsel, any more questions for Mr. Weston? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the public we should speak on this item? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, I'll come back to you. We've had some discussion with the applicant. Sounds like we've got some items that we think we can clean up here. Does counsel person want to make a motion with that in mind?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
I'd like to make a motion that we follow the recommendations of the P&amp;Z, with the exception that we move the dedicated... The designated parking spaces to the front of the building, in front of the doors of the retail store.
So, Scott, I'm going to lean on you here, so we could... What we're saying, we want to go ahead and approve the said S.U.P. with only the... With altering the number one...
Number two.
Or number two, and still go with number three, with the condition of number three and number four. Is that true?
So, we're altering... We're referencing the site plan. So, we're altering number two, as depicted on the site plan attached to the adoption ordinance, Exhibit A. So, we're altering the Exhibit A, and then we'll redraw the box to the two parking spaces.
For the rat back door. That make sense?
Yes.
Or wherever he wants it.
I would say wherever he wants it.
Right, wherever he wants it.
Well, that's specifically what he'd mentioned earlier, so he bring this up.
So, counsel has recommended approval with the said conditions from the counsel.
One second, I'm motioning.
We have that motion by Councilman Mobley, and a second by Councilman Allen. We'll get that tonight.
Should we start all over?
No. So, counsel, we have that motion and that second, and it's like we've got a little drawing there, so... All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That's approved. Thank you, Ms. Weston. Our next item is consider the following in regard to the Saratoga Phase 1, and it... We have the approval of an advanced funding agreement between the City of Granbury and the Texas Department of Transportation. B, we have an approval, an advanced funding agreement between the City of Granbury and Tech Dot, which replaces the original agreement. And C, approving the amended facilities improvement agreement, amendment number one for the Saratoga Phase 1A. And I'm going to call upon Chris Kaufman to give us a staff report on this and all of these folks.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel. This is really just administrative change. The numbers have changed to savings, and so the agreements need to reflect that. And Mr. Crownover's been working with the developer and with Tech Dot to resolve this issue, so I'll let him disperse any information you need, brother.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Mayor Hewlett, councilman. This agenda item centers on the, of course, the Saratoga development and the signal improvements, traffic signal improvements located at Highway 377 and Farm to Market Road 167, also known as Fall Creek Highway. So, before I get going, when I say "city," and I'm talking about money, the developer's putting up the money, the city has to be the pass-through to the state. I just want to make sure everybody gets that. About a year ago, counsel passed an agenda item about Saratoga, and an F.I.A. was passed reflecting signal improvements at 377, this intersection, in an amount of $50,090. As time passed and the development progressed, the developer and staff began to ask Tech Dot to, "We need these signal improvements." Tech Dot came back with us with an adjustment because, a couple of reasons. They said, "Within the next 10 years, that 377 is going to be widened, and they were going to use bigger mast arm poles." In addition to that, they told us that the lead time on the new poles could be up to a year. So, we didn't want to wait that long, the developer didn't want to wait that long. So, what they did, they restructured this advanced funding agreement to a lesser amount. What you're going to see out there in the construction, when it eventually gets there, is the two eastern poles or northern poles, if you would, in the intersection are going to be moved to the north a little bit in this... The structure of the intersection traffic signals is not going to change a whole lot. It's still going to look the same with wires and so forth. Because later on, when they do widen that, those big mast arm poles, for example, like you see at the intersection where HEB's at, would come into play there. So, that's kind of the summary of what we're talking about here, but the, like Mr. Kaufman said, the administrative... To get this changed around, we have an advanced funding agreement amendment that was passed at $50,090. We need to terminate that, the new amount for the fourth and final leg of this intersection improvement, came to a little over $37,000. In addition to that, we have to amend the facilities improvement agreement that counsel passed a year ago that also reflects those improvements on the traffic signals as well. So, it's a three-part agenda item. Again, I've tried to be as brief as I can and summarize the best I can. I'd be happy to answer any questions. The developer's engineer, Joe LaCroy from Barrett Hampton and Brown, is here tonight to answer any questions that you might have as well.
Rick, and correct me if I'm wrong, if... And counsel, if, you know, without Exhibit A, without A, you really can't go on to B and C, right?
Right. Yes, sir.
Need to look at A and make sure that...
That's correct.
Yeah. So, counsel, you have any questions for Chris or Rick?
Rick, did you...
Councilman Allen.
Did you get the kind of lights that... Like the other ones go blinking on the turn?
Flashing yellow.
Like returning left?
Flashing yellow on to me?
Yes, sir. Yeah, and they're new li... I'm sorry, they're new... Good question. They're new lights. They're LEDs, voluminaires. There'll be new wiring, those new strain poles, like the poles that are there, will be new as well. So, it'll be new improvements. It just won't be those real nice, strong-looking mast arms that you see at the HEB intersection. Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. The question, I think he's trying to answer is, can you turn left on a flashing yellow when the dust settles there? Yes?
That's my impression, yes, sir.
I just want to make sure I can turn left there.
Counsel, Councilman Corrigan?
When you met with Tech Dot, and they said the next 10 years, you got that in writing while you were there, didn't you?
I think we got that, didn't we? They actually told me five to 10, so...
But it's not on their plan?
I understand. I saw the same thing everybody else did. Anyway.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel, any more questions for the staff or... Well, thank you, Rick, for your short and sweet presentation there. Counsel, at this time, I'll entertain a motion. Like I said, we're going to go through the A, B, and C. First one being, entertain a motion approving the advanced funding agreement between one, between the City of Granbury and the Texas Department of Transportation, which will terminate the existing AFA agreement, CLS J number 090200148, for the signal light improvement at the proposed intersection of U.S. Highway 377 and FM 167, for the amount of $50,090. And I have that motion by Councilman Mobley, and a second by Councilman Wadley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Nay is approved, so we move on to item B. Counsel, any more discussion on this one? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for approving the advanced funding agreement, CSJ number 090200166, between the City of Granbury and Tech Dot, which replaces the original agreement, CSJ number 090200148, for the amount of $37,444. And I have that motion by Councilman Corrigan.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Mobley. Counsel, any more discussion on item number B? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Moving down to item number C. Hearing no discussion on that, I'll entertain a motion for approving the amended facility improvement agreement, amendment number one, for the Saratoga Phase 1A, F.I.A. 1805, with CJB Development, that is, the developer, to adjust the summary of costs, cash payment to reflect the revision to the AFA agreement.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Corrigan. Councilman Allen. And a second by Councilman Wadley. Counsel, any more discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That, too, is approved. Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Our next item is to set a date, time, and a place for our public hearing to receive public input on our proposed fiscal year 2019-2020 annual budget. Once again, I'm going to call Chris Kaufman to give us a staff report on that, if you would please, Chris.
Thank you, Mayor. As y'all are aware, it's budget season, and we have to set a time and a place for the budget hearing. And staff has looked at the calendar. We've attached one in your packet, and we are recommending to you September 3 for the public hearing and possible adoption of the budget, September 3, at the council meeting.
Okay, counsel, you heard the recommendation from the staff. Is there any questions or concerns on this item?
What day is your say, Chris?
September 3.
September 3, first meeting in September...
It's at a regular council meeting, counsel?
That's when we generally adopt the budget.
And that will be a public hearing item, so the public can speak on it, too. So, counsel, hearing no more discussion, I'll entertain a motion to approve setting the date for the... To set the time and the place for the public hearing to receive public input for the proposed fiscal year annual budget for September 3, 2019, here at City Hall at 6:00 p.m.
So moved.
I have that motion by Councilman Allen, and a second by Councilman Mobley. Counsel, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved, September 3. Our next item is to discuss a proposed 2019 property, the Avalorum, tax rate for the City of Granbury, and vote to place a proposal to adopt the rate of 0.399385 on the agenda for a future city council meeting as an action item, and set the date, time, and the place for the public hearing to receive input, public input, on the proposed 2019 property tax rate. So, once again, I'm going to turn this over to Chris, and you got it.
So, the tax rate that we put before you today is the exact same tax rate that we're collecting now. It is a little bit higher than the effective rate by about two cents. But if you'll recall, going through the budget workshop, we needed some more revenue. We were extremely short. We're talking about a lot larger increase than that. So, we did do some revisions to the budget and calculated it with the same tax rate in hopes that we would be able to fund the budget as presented in our workshop. And so, this vote does not adopt this tax rate. All this vote is tonight, is to post two public hearings in which we'll conduct public hearings, and then on the date that you adopt the budget is when you would adopt the tax rate. So, that gives you a little time to work through the process, and the dates that we suggest are in your memo. The first public hearing will be during the regular council meeting on August 20 at 6:00 p.m. And the second one would be on August 26 at noon, which is a Monday. And the reason for that is, there's been good attendance from counsel on Mondays at noon in the past, so we kind of looked at... On Tuesday evening of that same week, this council room is booked during the day and the evening for other meetings. And then, Wednesday the 26th, or Wednesday the 27th would be a possible date, you know, anytime you want to have it, and then Thursday as well. But there are other meetings that go on here, and I've got a clear window on Monday. So, if you want to do something other than what we're suggesting, let me work on that and verify it right quick, and we can go from there.
Counsel, while he's doing that, you go ahead and look at your counters, or is there any discussion on that? Councilman Allen, you got something to add to it?
Not that we have it on August 20th, that's our regular...
We... That's the first one. The first one.
That's the first one, at a regular meeting.
It's August 20th. Then the second would be August 26.
And you actually have to have it at a date in between the 26th and 29th? Am I correct in that, Chris?
The second meeting has to be between the 26th and the 29th, by law.
And where would we be voting on it, the 26th?
On September 3.
3. That's the one we just did.
Well, that's when we would adopt the tax rate. Under the laws this year, we've still got to figure that out for next year. They changed the rules on us.
I don't know. I wish we would look at our tax rate real close. Chris, you look what the county did three years ago, they went down 4 percent. School just talking about going 6, 8 percent down, and we're going up. And we had a windfall.
And Councilman Allen, that's what we can do here. That's... You know, the first meeting's going to be a discussion? No, no, I know. But, you know, I don't want people to get confused that we're setting these dates to approve that particular tax rate. approve that particular tax rate. It's to talk about it, you know, and, you know, to talk about that, or what it came in at the effective rate, or whatever. And they'll talk about those of both of these, but there is some complication or some discussion on the second meeting. I think everybody agrees with the second, the first meeting, because it's going to be at a council meeting. I mean, I'm okay with it anyway, but I'm sure all the council members are, but we need to really discuss where we want to have this second public hearing and discuss the tax rate also. You know, and I realize all the council is probably going to be there for the noon, but I also want to make sure that we can accommodate citizens that would want to participate also, so I want to keep that in mind. Council, do you have any discussion on the recommended dates to have the public hearings?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Wadley.
With the first one being a Tuesday evening, if we do the second one on Monday, the 26th at noon, it would accommodate folks that could sometimes come in the day and sometimes in the evening.
That's a, that's a true statement.
And so I would like to make a motion that we make the second meeting on the 26th at noon.
Are you going to make a motion for the first one?
And the first one on the 26th.
Yeah, we need to do both these together, yeah.
Okay. Well, the first one would be the 20th during regular council at 6:00, and the second meeting would be on Monday, the 26th at noon.
So council, I've got a, I've got a motion from Councilman Wadley to do the two dates, August the 20th at the regular council meeting here at City Hall, and the second one, August 26th at noon, here at City Hall.
Second.
And I have a second by Councilman Mobley. Council, any more discussion on these given dates? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. We set those dates for August 20th and August the 26th at noon. Our next item is to consider adopting Resolution Number 1921, requesting, let's see, requesting the Texas Transportation Commission taking action to include the US 377 Improvement Project in Granbury and Hood County in the 2020 Unified Transportation Plan, and encourage TexDOT to take action to complete this project. And I'm going to read in just a little bit of the background on this. US 377 roadway expansion project to Granbury is included in the North Central Texas Council of Government Transportation Plan, and has been included in the earlier Texas Department of Transportation Unified Transportation Plans. The limits of the City of Granbury portion of the project is from east of South Highway 144 to South Highway 167, and is currently not included in TexDOT's proposed 2020 UTP. The UTP from 2016 had over $20 million in funding for the US 377 through Hood County. That was proposed to begin construction in 2017, but never happened. Now the project is not listed in the proposed 2020 UTP at all. So the UTP is TexDOT's 10-year plan to guide transportation project development in Texas. The UTP is developed annually and is approved by the Texas Department of Transportation Commission each year prior to August the 31st. So the UTP authorizes projects for construction, development, and planning activities, and includes transportation projects. So if a project is not included in the UTP, it is not going to get any attention from TexDOT from funding perspective. So I'm going to have Chris talk a little bit, I think you're going to have Michael kind of reemphasize how important it is for us, council, to get these recommended resolutions, letters, anything else that we take down to Austin to TexDOT, to get on the radar and to make sure that we don't lose this again, and that we get it on. So, Chris?
Yes, sir. There's a public, public process where they're taking comment, and we are within that time. And Michael's been working to put this resolution together, and also, we would like to get the Chamber of Commerce involved and the County Commissioners' Court involved, and Michael, I'll just let you kind of take over from there.
Absolutely. This was something we, Chris and I noticed when we were reviewing the Unified Transportation Plan, and there was the glaring absence of this project kind of struck us. And so we wanted to get this in front of council to give us formal direction, and as Chris said, we're encouraging any and all residents, county residents, elected officials at the state, federal level, anyone and everyone to help us get this project on the 2020 Unified Transportation Plan by TexDOT. And we intend, there's also a Texas 21 meeting this upcoming later this week that Chris has asked me to attend, as well as some council members, the mayor and mayor pro temp are going, I believe, and this is going to be a subject that we're going to bring up there as well, and hopefully deliver this resolution to that meeting. Happy to answer any additional questions, if you have any. We'll have it on our website, yes, ma'am, we'll have it on our website, and we have it available through Bethany as well, exactly where we can send, I should have said that, I'm sorry. We will have all that information available where citizens can send their comments, we even have a template of the kind of words you could use, if you like, and give you kind of a head start on saying, saying what they need to hear. But it's disturbing that this wasn't listed on their list of projects from our perspective.
Yes, really. Council, you have any comments or recommendations to, to the staff or Michael, because, like I said, we're definitely going to try to get our people to notice us in Austin and wherever else we've got to take this to, to get recognized on our need for this.
The Texas 21 meeting has a, the head engineer for the entire state is going to address the committee, so it's going to be a great window of opportunity to provide this resolution.
I'll be carrying it around with me all year. Oh, by the way. Well, thank you, Michael, and.
Thank you.
Council, with no further discussion on that, I'll entertain a motion to approve adopting Resolution Number 1921.
So moved.
I have that motion by Councilman Corrigan. You second?
Second.
And I got a second by Councilman Mobley. Council, any more discussion on this item? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. I'd like to back up to item number six here, I apologize, we, this should have been an A and a B, but there should be two, two motions on this item. We did make a motion to set the dates, but we also, council, need discussion, make a motion to approve, or to vote or to place the proposed adopted rate of 0.399385 on agenda for a future, for a future council meeting. Not saying that's going to be the set one, but we need to discuss that, and we've already said we're going to have a meeting, but we need to vote on what we're having our meetings for.
And what that also includes is it means you're not going to adopt the tax rate higher than that.
Right.
So moved.
Second.
So I have a motion by Councilman Mobley, and a second by Councilman Allen. Hearing no, any more discussion, council? Hearing no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Thank you, Carla, for catching that. I'll now declare that the city council is convening in open session, that all our members, with the exception of Councilmember Reiner, are present, and the city council will now go into closed session pursuant to the provisions of Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in these following sections, Section 551071, consultation with the attorney, Section 5511072, deliberation regarding real property, and Section 551087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiation. We're now going to executive session. Council will now reconvene into open session, there was no action taken in executive session. Council, do you have any further discussion? Hearing none, I will now close the council meeting.